...meeting to order. Can you please take roll? Klein.
Here.
Keenick.
Here.
Pujol.
Here.
Roder.
Here.
Stagg.
Here.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, public comment, if you're here for something later on the agenda, hold for that, but if anybody has any public comment.
Can you provide an update with regard to the annexation request that's in place?
We have no update.
And with regard to the two engineers not coming together?
We got-
A big stumbling block?
We were waiting on the county. That's about all we can say.
And at this point, we don't have a timeframe that-
Nope. How close are they? I thought they changed the dollar now. Aren't they close on that? I thought they were close at some time. That's not close yet?
When we have information, we'll put it on an agenda so you guys can discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought you might want to know.
We've got nothing.
And it's unfortunate, but, I mean, your hands are tied and
Yeah.
that's all I can pass on to the clientele.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Maybe next week.
We can only hope.
We'll see.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other comment? All right, consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Adam. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, formal complaint by Kathy Durbin, uh, to address counsel regarding 131 Orchard Street, operating a business out of the property. Um, there is the letter from Kathy plus pictures, and then there's a picture that wouldn't open on your computers, but we have it printed if you need to see additional pictures.
It was just one that I took on this one fifth, so. It doesn't really show up a lot.
Is there a city ordinance against us?
Against? You can operate a business out of your home if it's fully enclosed within a building. So like, if you do something out of your garage, or if you have in-home daycare, stuff like that, because that's inside a building, that is allowed in residential.
Even if it was out of a building, like, say it was out of a building like at my property or whatever, would that have to be zoned commercial then? Or would that be able to be?
If it's in your garage.
Or a building on my property.
Yeah, like a shed.
Is still residential.
It's still, it's still, it wouldn't have to be zoned commercial. Like, if I wanted to open up a shop at my, on my property, I wouldn't have to rezone it or anything.
Right, as long as you kept that all contained. And any buildings you would build for it would still have to meet set back requirements for residential.
Right, I'm just worried about the, I was just wondering about the zoning.
Yeah.
So since this isn't enclosed, this is out of our ordinance then?
Notice what it looks like from the pictures. He's basically got his work outside. He's doing a lot of the work outside.
Right.
So he's in violation.
So he would be in violation because it's a residential neighborhood and it's not, like, if he were doing it all in his garage, then he'd be fine. She did talk to the lawyer today. And he advised to send a letter about the ordinance to the property owner to make sure he is aware. From what we understand, the previous clerk and mayor had contacted him at some point over the past few years and had told him things such as it needs to be all enclosed, community property, stuff like that. But we couldn't find any written documentation on it.
So yeah, in, in the residential single-family district RS, which is the zone of that property, home occupations are permitted. But yeah, everything must be confined or nothing can be stored, held outside of the home or
Building.
Or building, garage, right, and.
So the next step is sending a letter.
That's what we advised. Um, pending what council wants to do.
Send a letter. I would, I don't think that. Motion to send a letter. Yeah, back to me, they'd send. One second. That's pretty open a shot.
Any further discussion questions?
The letter states though, he's got a certain amount of time to address the concerns.
What do we put on it normally? Thirty days, sixty days? How long do you guys want to give them?
Yeah, exactly. That's such a concern.
I think you gotta give them at least thirty.
Oh, yeah.
Minimum. Minimum. You meant what?
The minimum.
Minimum, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I'm saying most of these are ninety day. Cedar Rapids is always an eighty day.
To go come into compliance with it.
So what council wants?
Yeah.
It makes sense.
Okay.
My question is this, is this something that's year-round? Because it looks to me like it's something to say more. Is it happening in the winter time also?
I think this is Ms. Durbin here.
I'm Kathy Durbin, and yeah, if you have questions, I'd like to answer them. And I know Bob and Danny are here, so I want to be respectful of their presence and address them, you know, directly too, because it is regarding them. But it's mostly, um, it's been going on since 2019, 2020. As you'll see in my notes, I don't know if you all got Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So there's more than just one zoning that's being violated, and there's other ordinances like, um, public peace because of the noise level that comes from the, the home and from the yard, the driveway right next to my home. Um, that occurs especially very frequently during, um, the summer, fall, spring months. So that's the most of the year. In the winter, um, there's less noise and commotion going on, you know, twenty feet from my, my living room. So it's, uh, it's also, in my view, it's also a peace disruption with the definitions that you have in the ordinances. Uh, and I listed them all, and so you can go through and you can look at them to see what the violations are. You know, and I have things documented. It's been going on since I moved in, since November of 2019. And, um, I know it's a business. Bob told me that it was a business. I know the association, when we did have an association at Orchard Heights, said, please stop, and he didn't, and they didn't do anything about it. And clearly, you know, a couple of years ago, when the city came by, you know, it's still going on. So I just want it to stop. I just want the noise to stop, and I want the junk and the clutter to stop. That's, you know, however that happens, it doesn't matter to me. I just feel like I have a right to live in a residential neighborhood with a peace.
Let's make sure we're addressing just the-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. I was just trying to be respectful. I don't like to talk about people when they're in the room.
Yeah, but this, this is-
Okay.
We're, we're past that.
I just like to, um, live in a residential neighborhood with residential type noise rather than the, you know, the raucous noise and the drills, the saws, the jackhammers, the skip loaders, you know, all the, all the things that are going on, um, on a fairly regular basis.
So this is happened outside of our noise ordinance hours then?
Well, I'm not aware that Swisher has noise ordinance hours.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Um, but it can happen at any time, and it was after dark last night when it all calmed down. So that would be after six or seven.
Standard, I, we need to look up the noise ordinance hours, because-
I think it's like nine or ten.
Nine or ten o'clock is pretty standard for every community.
I think it's like ten to six.
It's usually six AM till ten PM.
Six AM.
What's ours?
I'm gonna look, give us a second. I don't see it in forty, did you?
Mm-mm.
I'm going with sixty-two. Yeah.
Is it electronic version?
Yeah, it's on the website.
Mm-hmm.
What, what's the, um, what's the sub, or the solution to coming up to, making the homeowner come up to compliance? I mean, the only way you come up to compliance would be either to have a building it's done in or to stop, right?
Right. Yeah.
I don't see anything that, that talks about times or I'm not sure if finding anything.
Is there any, anybody who does inside the building? Do you have a building where you do this business or?
Yeah.
First of all, there is not a business running out of-
Well, I mean-
Nope.
But, okay, but the noise and stuff, is that something, something inside?
We can't fix our own property. I mean, we're making improvements to our property. We put in a retaining wall in our backyard. We can't do that. Yeah, it's gonna disturb people. We're sorry. I mean, like last night, we were moving stuff from, he's got a shop, he's moving stuff out. We can't do that on our own property?
Kinda, furthermore, with the noise that supposedly she's talking about, um, everything that's on my property is personal use. Not business-related, not anything. So any noise that I was making is personal use. Working on my pickup, my personal pickup, there is not any business, and I don't know where she got that I'm running a business out of my house because I'm not. Everything that is in my possession at my property is personal use.
Good.
I'm not sure how to address the council. Can I spook again or not? Because I don't want to argue about this, but I just want to be clear. Um, I take this seriously. This is not something I want to do. Um, I just feel like I cannot peacefully live in my home because of what's happening in the driveway twenty feet away from me. And there's a rotation of metal parts coming in on large trailers or in trucks or in backs of cars or whatever, coming out, clinking in a trailer, being cut, sawed, and, you know, Bob wearing the ear protection, that's loud. If he has to wear ear protection, that's loud. And then all that metal disappears, so I'm not sure where that goes, and then more comes back, and then it's in and out, in and out. Bob told me a few years back that he was running a business, um, trying to make ends meet by, um, you know, selling this junk metal or whatever, the large trucks, the refrigerators, what cars, just the randomness of it all. That comes and goes, comes and goes. So I don't understand how that's not a business, and that's what he told me, but I'm not here to argue. I'm just here to present what I know to be true, and here just to let you know what it's like living next door to all of this ruckus and noise going on on a pretty regular basis.
Is there, if, if this is all like personal, uh, stuff that you guys are doing, is there like an end date in, in mind? Like, I'd like, you'll be done at a certain, it's-
I mean, home improvement is continuous, isn't it?
Well, yeah, I'm just, I just didn't know if you guys had a date, date that you thought you'd be done.
Well, there's lots of projects that I need to get done around my house. I mean, everybody here knows owning a home is an endless, endless renovation. So I cannot say, I'd have to say no to your question. I mean, I have concrete work that I want to get done. So, you know, that's another thing. So, you know.
And a lot of our work, we do ourselves. We don't hire it out. So yeah, it does take longer to get done.
Right.
I mean, some people are more fortunate to have, you know, the funds to get it done in a day, you know? I mean, I work from home three days a week. It doesn't bother me. And I'm right there.
She's even closer than what Karen would, Kathy?
So I couldn't find any hours in our code, and I pulled, pulled up the state code because we would default to them, and the state doesn't have set hours either. So there are no hours in the city for noise.
So all these pictures here are home improvement? Like all the, I don't even know what pictures you have.
We got pictures of washers, it looks like a washer, a bunch of other stuff, and another trailer full of
Freezers.
Freezers, a bunch of filing cabinets. This is all out of the house? It's like home improvement out of your home?
I have no idea what you're looking at.
Well, I can give you a feeling. Those are things that come into the driveway, stay in the driveway, and eventually leave the driveway.
And another thing, I mean, why do you? So we don't even have this car anymore. These are old pictures. Yeah, she's got stuff here that isn't even recent.
Yeah, this stuff is all years old.
Yes.
I'd like to speak to that. The reason that I sent those to you is to show you the continuation and the rotation of the stuff. It comes in, it goes, it comes in again, it goes.
But if it's common, why isn't that-
It comes in again, it goes. So it's a continuous rotation of the junk business coming in and out of the driveway. That is my point with those pictures, is to say that. And so there's always something lingering in the property, which I believe is against an ordinance or zoning.
There's a lot of things you can store in your yard.
Okay.
Especially if it's not there for a prolonged period.
Right, and if it's not in the city right-of-way.
As long as it's mobile or moves.
Okay.
Like moving in the door, correct.
So he can run the business out of driveway, make all the noise, cluttering up the metal, throw it in the back of the trailer, and then leave and move it out again, and that's all perfectly fine with us in.
Well, if it's a business, it needs to be run out of a building. But if somebody were to fix up an antique car and they had it sitting in their driveway, that would be allowed. They wouldn't be able to park it on the edge of the street because that's city right-of-way, and that we could force them to deal with.
Sure.
But things like that aren't allowed, so it's, the question is, is it a business? Is it personal? Because those are two different things.
Yeah.
There are one, well, that is your private property, so you should be telling something. Is there any way you could, if the noise is there, I don't know, I don't listen to it. If there's a lot of noise, is there some way you could muffle it a little bit or, you know, tail that to a certain point? I know some, sometimes when you're dealing with metal, it gets pretty noisy, but is there some way you could?
I mean, then you can't for sitting right there in a privacy fence. That blocked, like, the noise that he was doing on his personal pickup.
That did not block the noise that he was doing on his personal-
Well, it echoes back there too.
Maybe, maybe does a little bit of noise from-
Let's let her talk.
Sorry.
So where our property is, if you're in the backyard or in the back area of the houses, it echoes very bad back there. Um, you can hear our neighbors behind us having a conversation. You can hear exactly what they're saying. That's how much it echoes back there. I don't know that we can stop that.
I don't, I don't, there's somebody limiting, is there some way to limit it a little? I know you can't, you can't use rubber. But if there's some way, you know, you get together, it'd be a perfect situation for us.
We're not gonna get together.
She, this is the first week. I mean, she does not talk to us. She did not even, like, talk to us about this. We found out from other people that this was on the city council agenda. I mean, to me, you would think a neighborly thing would be that she would come and talk to your neighbors before you brought it to city council.
I have had several conversations with Bob and Danny. Um, Bob won't talk to me at this point. I think I spoke with you, Mayor Julie, about that. So I think, I, I'm to the point where, um, I'm at a roadblock communicating with my neighbors, which is not something I like. But this is the point where I am, and I am tired of listening to it. I'm tired of trying to, you know, deal with it or pretend it's not there, or just giving the benefit of the doubt, and, um, you know, and since it's really difficult for Bob to talk to me or won't talk to me anymore, I just decided this was the best course of action to take.
The last conversation I had with you, I told you that you were-
Let's keep the conversation with council.
Yeah, like this. That she could come over and talk to, if she didn't feel comfortable talking to Bob, she could talk to me at any time. She has made no attempt to do that. I actually walked over and talked to her. I made the attempt. I mean, well.
Danny did come over to my home and asked me what I was doing when she saw the, um, the flags out, and I said, I'm building, I'm extending my privacy fence because that's the next step I thought I could do, try to block seeing some of the junk every time I, you know, go around the garden to my house or to my backyard or go in the driveway. So I, I built an extra thirty feet on my privacy fence, and she said that she and Bob were going to do that, and we had a conversation about that, and we had a friendly conversation. It was very nice. But I explained to her that Bob wouldn't speak with me anymore, and when I go over to the house to try to talk to Bob, he ignores me, he walks away from me. Um, he just, it just doesn't happen anymore. So a few times, a couple of times, I think, I sent a message to Danny and asked her to, um, ask Bob to turn down the radio because it was so loud. I'm trying to be in the backyard, or I can't remember what the other thing was. And kindly, he did. He complied. Danny was able to ask him to do that, and he did. I don't feel like I should constantly police what there, what the noise level there. I constantly have to email and text Danny to say, please stop that. I would like for the city to say, these are your boundaries, these are the conditions, so this is what you can do within our ordinances, and these other things are what you can't do. That is why I am here. That is why I came to you.
So you don't have our number, you don't have our email, so how are you texting?
Let's keep up with the council. I am.
All right, what do we, yeah, what's our decision?
Big waste of the council's time.
What do you guys want to do?
I think, personally, myself, I need to look at the, the ordinance better, better. I mean, you guys are saying you're not even finding hours in there or whatever. I think that needs to be reviewed a little bit, even, I mean, before we can make a decision on anything. I'd like to see, I mean, I haven't read, I personally haven't read the whole noise ordinance and-
Chapter forty point oh-three, disorderly conduct, section two noise, loud and ruckus, ruckus, ruckus noises in the vicinity of any residence or public building which causes unreasonable distress to the occupants thereof. That's it. It's one sentence.
It's pretty subjective, too.
Yeah.
Incredibly.
Yeah.
And then there's nothing additional in the Iowa code that it is referenced either. It's a lot of the same disorderly conduct. So our code does not give any specifics for council to take direction on, so council needs to make decisions.
So like, in theory, I could sit out my backyard with Roder having some beers, crankin' music till two in the morning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
According to our code.
According to our code.
That is loud.
That's wild, because I remember like ten years ago, when I was living in my house, there was like three of us sitting on our back deck just playing music. I didn't think it was loud, but a cop drove by and walked up and said, hey, you need to turn the music down. So I thought there was a noise ordinance.
Not according to our code.
I believe there is an ordinance, like, for vehicles.
Yeah.
Like if an officer can hear
Yeah, there's-
any music from like outside of a vehicle, so maybe that's what he was implying.
Yeah, because a lot of that's DOT. That wouldn't be city code.
Yep, but for that instance, possibly.
So what's council want to do?
Honestly, right now, I would say we table it and have a discussion on this thing a little bit more to see what, if we want to change our ordinance or add to it or whatever. I mean, it's kind of hard to, I don't know what leg we have to stand on if we don't have nothing in writing right now.
I agree.
I mean, if, if, if this needs to be taken care of, or, I mean, I, I totally see both sides of this. I mean, it's, but it's pretty vague of like, there's, there's no, he, he's not in violation of anything, but he's, but she's also in, in the right to be, you know, annoyed or-
To file, to file the complaint.
To file a complaint, yeah, but I mean, I mean, I, I didn't know our thing was that vague. I mean, I, I, I don't know what we can actually legally do if we don't have something in writing right now. We should probably table, look into what Cedar Rapids or Iowa City is, or if Ely has one or something, and come up with our own at the next meeting. We might not want to go with a big city. We might want to go with like an Ely or a Fairfax.
Ely or Fairfax, still.
Yeah, or something like that.
We could look around and just get an idea of what other cities' noise ordinance is and develop our own.
Right.
But at the end of the day, I would assume most of the work you're doing is happening daytime, so even if we develop a noise ordinance, it's not gonna be out of compliance.
Right, but still, we should have one for future, I mean.
One thing I'm more concerned with is, yes, you're telling me that these, some of these pictures are older pictures of stuff that you had. If you are doing renovations to your home, to your property, that kind of stuff, you may be cutting some metal, but you won't be doing it all the time. And my concern is, is if you're gonna be having a lot of stuff made out like this in your driveway and everything else, and the noise is gonna cause your neighbors a lot of issues, you may want to try and figure out a way to get that inside to do some of this. What I'm thinking is, we have one neighbor here that's complaining. I don't want to see another neighbor in here complaining. You understand?
I have a neighbor that lives right across the street.
Okay, but I'm, you understand what I'm saying?
Aye.
So I'm just saying, right now, we're looking at, we're gonna look at our ordinances, we're gonna try to figure something out going that way. I'm just saying, as a heads up, you might want to not have a lot of the sheet metal like I was seeing in some of these pictures that's on your property and you're doing all this stuff. If you are running a business out of there, that's fine. I'm just saying, our code does say that you need to have it in a building to run it out of there.
But I'm not.
Okay, but I'm, okay, but I'm just saying, that's kind of the gesture. I do agree with council that we ought to table this, look at the codes, and look at what else is out there in different municipalities and what they do pertaining to this kind of stuff, and we can go forward from there.
Okay, if everybody's in agreement, we can table it. All right, uh, structural engineer for 122 Rose Avenue. Um, continuing with the building.
Motion to approve. Inspection.
Second.
Discussion.
What are we gonna, uh, expect? I see you're talking about the attic reinforcement. Is that, that peaked roof, was that on top of the flat roof that was there? Did you remove the flat roof?
No, there was no.
I don't think there was a.
It's not.
That roof was there?
It's always been peaked.
In the center like that?
If you go in there, it-
That's a loft upstairs.
Yeah, but I thought that was used, that's been years ago.
The front side has like a little lot, like, essentially like an apartment area type.
When are they talking, do you know what they're talking about, the attic reinforcement?
That's an engineer question.
They never give you the report.
Do we have an engineer, don't know, we don't have any engineers here.
So they, they looked at the inspection report.
So there was a commercial building inspection done on the property, but that commercial building inspector is not a structural engineer, and he pointed out some of the bracing in the second level that should be reviewed by a structural engineer.
Yeah, for something like that, a structural engineer will have to have a stamp on it to make it legal. You'll have to have a structural engineer's stamp.
Other discussion? All right, we have a motion- All right, we have a motion a second. All in favor to do the structural engineer?
Uh.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh Kestic Park parking lot improvement. There's a picture. Yeah, this engineer presented this and it went before the park and rec board. Um I hadn't heard any comment on it. Excuse me, so um this is showing forty-nine spots that could be installed at the park and get rid of that angled parking that nobody likes.
I, I think for a temporary fix, it sounds all good there, but this is not a long-term fix.
Right, it, it.
I mean.
I think he was putting together an estimate for, um, yeah, chip seal for it to be straight.
Just like having.
He just wanted to show.
Those blocks, like I know what happens. People don't perfectly pull up their auto bomb and.
But if, if it's chip sealed, we can paint it.
Then we can paint it and yes, now we have a solution.
Is it?
Um.
That twenty-four foot between them, is that enough distance for with the?
I would imagine it's all.
Truck truck on the cue, uh.
On the yard.
To be backing up and stuff.
All those are serious.
To be backing up and stuff?
Yeah, there is a roof, twenty-four foot.
Yeah, that's pretty tight for, I mean.
It's for trucks like ours?
Yeah, it's tight. But it is.
You can do it, but you got to make several turns.
I just don't.
Technically, it's basic code.
I just don't think you can come anymore towards the street.
I don't think you can either.
Uh, we've got more trees to tear out, but you have more green space. They might have to put in a retaining wall.
One, one thing I would not like to see is more trees taken out of a park.
Right.
I mean, we already lost a couple just from everything else and that's what's nice thing about a park is usually trees.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, you can see that you're gaining more spots even on the east side there, the northeast corner.
Mm-hmm.
You're gaining basically where people pulled off anyway. Um.
Yeah, in reality, how often is that? I mean, I know it is at the, with the fundays or um.
Every Saturday?
Is it really?
Every Saturday and then throughout the week on the nights that the little kids have practice up there?
It's a whole, yeah. It's a zoo up there.
So.
Yeah, it's surprising there's mornings it was when.
Do you just want to talk about this during budgeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
You gotta get a number from Tim what you think it's gonna be a estimate for.
That's, yeah, instead of just like diving into this and then realizing you could budget for chip sealing next year, it's stupid to do it twice. I say terrible.
Especially since it's this late.
Yes.
Leonard who's having to watch traffic on the freeway.
There's nobody up there the rest of the year.
Right.
All right, moving on. Uh Kestic Park Pavilion and Bald Iron Reservation. One, these are the changes um that we had directed Shelley. Yeah, so what you see in red, um, those items went, went to the park and rec board. They made the recommendation of the um price increases. And then at their last meeting, they also talked about, which we hadn't talked about, um, the key deposit. And so I just said, um, that I'd like to get it all one update approved at a time um versus coming back and forth. So then I added um some change to, you know, how the key deposit would be received and paid back. And also, I, I really like, and I, I did put in um that, a stipulation and I know, and I'm flexible, but I don't like it when somebody shows up at three fifty-nine and fifty sec, you know, ten seconds before four o'clock or I've got to sit here and wait on a Friday night, right? Especially when typically I call the people and say, hey, just FYI, it's Thursday. Make sure you're here by, you know, Friday afternoon. Um so I'd like to have something in there that says, you know, you're agreeing to have it picked up by one o'clock on the business day prior to your event.
So is this a per day usage rate?
It is.
Mm-hmm.
Why, why the three to four hundred percent?
I can't answer that, that came from park and rec. I don't.
That's what every other community is.
This went to park and rec?
Most of the other communities have nicer parks than we have.
I was gonna say it's.
They're, they're, they're the hell of a difference. Ely Park is, wow.
I'm telling you, you, the seventy-five dollars for the large shelter and everything else is still cheaper than Fairfax without a concession stand and everything else.
I will tell you for, I don't run the softball tournament anymore, but these rates will have the softball tournament officially canceled.
Mm-hmm.
Because I mean, you're gonna have to pay four hundred dollars to run the tournament when there's six hundred dollars in total entry fee money. Um just like see, I don't even know how long that tradition's been going on.
Well, it, you know, these are recommendations from the park and rec board. This council can set the fees.
I think that's, I think, in my personal opinion, I think that's awful steep. I don't care what.
Is there a recommendation you would want to seek, Kurt?
Double it. I mean, double everything instead of, I mean, you were going from twenty dollars to seventy-five. You're going from ten to forty-five. You're going from twenty-five to seventy-five. That's a huge jump. I mean, hell, if all of a sudden I went to the grocery store and something was three to four times higher, I probably wouldn't be buying it.
You do right now.
You do now.
Well, I know, but that's been over, that's been over a, a long period of time. You know what I'm saying?
It's been over four years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I like the price increases because it, at the end of the day, this money will go back to parks and rec, right? So that's money that we're gonna need to continue upgrades up there. Um. Yeah, I don't see.
But it also might, you know, turn down some people from renting this stuff too.
I think if it hurts entities being able to use the park because of the cost, that's, that's an issue.
Yeah, I'm not saying that it's, it's higher than any of the other towns and everything, but I mean, we're just, I mean, we're Swisher with nine hundred. I mean, I don't know, that's a lot. That's a big increase. My opinion, but.
Do you think fifty, twenty-five and keep the lights at twenty-five is fair?
So the bald iron lights are not used very, very much anyway. Right, so.
And, and, you know, like what, a couple hours at a time? I, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
It's like three hours.
So I, I don't see our bills being outrageous when.
Well, we could, we could justify a little bit of a raise on the lights because we're all getting an electric rate increase.
Well, I think this.
Everybody has a whole.
I think this already covers the lights and, and wood cover.
That's what I mean, but that's why we can do the justice.
Besides the softball tournament. I guess that, that Friday night.
There was eight, one, once.
Those other Friday night, isn't there people that go up on Friday nights to play some game out there?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that they ever.
Maybe they don't do it.
Reserved or used for. Yeah, they, they do it in the spring.
Yeah, they used to.
It's a, I can't remember what it's called, but it's.
Wiffle ball?
Sport.
No, no, it's out in the outfield. They set up this, they like set up a whole field out there. It's, it's crazy. It's like wiffle ball essentially.
I've seen them, I don't know what it's.
Um. Fifty, twenty-five.
I think that's an adult wiffle ball league or something, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's like a group of like twenty people.
Yeah.
I would. My biggest reservation is the lights. Um. And yeah, that's just a lot. Like to me, like are they gonna charge the uh sports league people twenty-five dollars every Saturday to use the scoreboard? Is that the plan?
Who uses the scoreboard?
Well, I think what, well, it hasn't been fixed.
It hadn't been fixed, but before it was fixed, they were using it.
So I think once it gets fixed, when they do kids T-ball or whatever, is that gonna be every twenty-five dollars?
That's up to you guys. I don't, I don't know. I've never charged anybody, nobody's told me they use the scoreboard.
It's because it hadn't been working since you did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
Fifty, twenty?
Daryl, D, Daryl, you would've been, would've been probably the only one in town back then. But back when Swisher used to have ball leagues up there every Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights.
Yeah.
Did the league have to pay for the light, for the use of the scoreboard?
No.
I didn't think so. I mean, I'm saying that's years ago, but I mean, that, that was when it was used a lot, you know, that scoreboard was.
The switch was right there.
Yeah.
I think instead of a scoreboard fee, because you're already paying for lights typically,
Mm-hmm.
Would be like to even put a deposit down in like protection of the scoreboard system if something would break.
Sure.
Rather than each time like twenty-five dollars. I mean, I just see this and, I mean, I, I ran the softball tournament for years and I look at this, say a hundred dollars a day to use the lights for a matter of an hour, like.
Right, especially in the summer when you're only running it from like eight to nine or, or nine thirty, you know.
I think we always turn them on about eight fifteen till ten and.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a lot. And we just, one of the longest traditions in this town.
Again, is there any recommendation? I guess my, my whole thought process, and it was a little steep when I saw it come back from park and rec too. These aren't numbers that I'm just making up.
I like.
Um fifty, twenty-five and leave it at twenty-five.
Like Chris, what, just double everything?
I.
Leave the lights at twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So go to forty for the large shelter, twenty for the small.
I think even fifty is reasonable.
For the large shelter?
Yes.
You're getting the concession stand.
Right. So like you're getting the bathrooms, right?
And the concession, you're getting keyed concessions.
And the concessions.
Oh, you get into the concession house.
If you, if you want it, you've got the key to concession.
Like seventy-five for me to that large, getting concessions is not outrageous.
No, that's what I'm talking about.
I could see like seventy-five for the large, twenty for the small.
Yeah, cause you don't get the concession stand and nothing else. It's just a forbidding space. Seventy-five, twenty and leave the lights at twenty-five.
Yeah.
But then do you want a deposit for?
I would consider it because I think that's one thing they're working on is getting a new.
Controller.
Controller or something.
Yeah, how much does that add up?
And if, and if the first person goes out, rents it and breaks it, then we're screwed.
But they don't, they don't, we don't keep the deposit though, right?
As long as it, they.
No, but like as long as the controller comes back, good.
Right, right, got you.
Back.
But what's, isn't the, isn't the deposit in the concession stand and everything else?
That, that would be separate.
That's separate, okay, that's.
What you're seeing added right now is just a key deposit. And that came from the park and rec board.
Did they want a hundred dollar key deposit? That's just for the concession stand?
Correct.
But they get that back as long as it's not.
If they return the key, right.
Right, now.
Just so you don't have to rekey everything.
Right, but you're, but what about the, on the key deposit, how does that work? Like say like Adam goes up there and rents the thing for the weekend or for the day and leaves the, everything all dirty and doesn't pick anything up. They, they get a hundred dollar deposit back?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that doesn't cover the, that doesn't cover the cleanup?
Just time and deposit to the key, that's it. Yeah, for now. Um, you have to explain to me how this scoreboard works. So and who's paying for it? Who's paying to have it repaired right now?
Parks and Rec. From my latest understanding.
I don't know, I'm not, first thing I've ever heard.
I don't know if they've approached that because it probably won't be used again until the softball tournament. Because like there's, I don't think there's spring baseball. I think it's spring soccer and then T-ball in the summer and then fall soccer. So nobody will use it again really until the softball tournament in August. Or I guess T-ball, I guess before that, they probably won't, maybe.
So it'd be interesting to find out what it's costing to be repaired before you set a deposit on that, right? Because if it's gonna cost five hundred dollars to repair something.
Yeah, I ask a question.
Yeah.
How, so you're saying that have a deposit on the controller for the scoreboard, right? How, how are you gonna know that that controller is not broken? Like say somebody drops it.
That's a good point too. I have no idea.
I think that'd be adjusted every time.
Justin would have to.
Go down and check it out.
It's not rented out that much that Justin couldn't, six times a year run down there and make sure stuff plugs in.
I looked up Fairfax's prices. They charge a different, a more expensive fee for non-residents. The most expensive is ninety dollars for a non-resident. They have three parks, the cheapest is fifty. And it doesn't include anything but basically And it doesn't include anything but basically the park and electricity in the pavilion.
What's the residence chart?
It does not say, it just says if you're a non-resident, so people can see it on the website.
So it's residence free then?
I don't know.
No.
I don't know, I don't know that perfect. I don't know what it was, but.
But we can contact them.
Yeah. I just don't want us to price this out of people actually, townspeople wanting to use it and rent it, that's what, that's the thing I meant, I know what you're guys are saying, that's not, that's no big deal, seventy-five dollars or whatever, but it sure is when it comes from twenty dollars to seventy-five.
It's probably also hasn't been updated since the NMD skirt.
Probably not, but, I mean, it's still, it's still, you're still asking somebody to pay four times as much, I mean, whether, whether the town was smart enough to keep raising the prices every five dollars every three years or not, I mean, you guys heard all the complaints about the sewer going up, I mean, and we're blaming that, that we never raised the prices before, so.
That's what I'm saying, we're the council that, and I'm glad I'm on it, to fix a lineup, these things that have not been addressed for thirty years.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I didn't, doing it all at one time is, I mean, I, I, I agree, it needs to be an increase, I'm just thinking it's.
What if we go fifty, twenty, twenty-five?
I'm good with that, with the hundred dollar deposit away.
That's kinda what I recommend, yeah, that, 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 I mean, that seems reasonable.
Fifty, twenty, twenty-five for the lights, still with the hundred and the rest of the wording Shelley has in here, I would make a motion to go with that.
I was saying.
Do you want to add on a deposit for the, or not yet?
I don't think we're ready for that.
No, because we don't even have it working.
I don't think, no.
Alright, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, lift station repair estimate, there's a cost in your packets, um, this is what he was talking about at the last meeting that he was working on.
Motion approved.
Second.
Station repair.
Second.
Discussion?
Obviously, what's the problem?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, fiscal year twenty-four annual urban renewal report, uh, to review and approve submitting the Iowa Department of Management. So this is just the annual report, it basically shows the state what you're using TIP dollars for and what your ending balance is. Um, right now, we're using TIP revenues to service that division street debt. And that leaves us with an ending balance from fifteen thousand twenty-one dollars at seven one of twenty-three to twenty-five thousand eight twenty-two at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, which is six thirty of twenty-four.
Got a question, uh, somewhere, uh, LMI's, I bet you're somewhere, are you, did anything in that one?
There is no LMI right now.
I, I bet you're somewhere.
Yeah, you probably did, but there is no LMI right now.
That's why we had nothing Disney, we got funds for it, anyway.
Nope. We do not, no, there is no LMI money coming in right now, not until, it'll be on this new subdivision, but nothing right now.
Okay, cool, let's, okay.
Yeah, zero, amount restricted for LMI, zero.
Okay, I read somewhere, but, but LMI, uh, LMI.
There's none right now, yep. Any motion approved?
Motion approved, second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that carries. Fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, TIP certification, uh, to review the certification request available for TIP and approve submitting to the Johnson County Auditor.
Yep, so this is the annual report that we submit, um, in order to let the auditor know what we're using the TIP dollars for and what we need to, uh, receive, and, um, in speaking with Heidi from Northland Securities, um, she made the suggestion that we, we capture as much as we possibly can, which is, I have that here somewhere, around a hundred and, hundred and fifteen, hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and we're typically using, um, about eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars of it every year. So I'll get you guys a little bit more.
That's all on infrastructure, Shelley?
It's all.
That's all on infrastructure, the eighty-five thousand or whatever?
It's, it, that's, that was to service the debt on that, um.
But it was on.
Yeah, on the.
Infrastructure of, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, yes, Kurt, yep, mm-hmm, yep.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, motion carries. Uh, FEMA preliminary firm and FIS correspondence, um, so this is the flood insurance study. We have ninety days to appeal it, honestly, I would not recommend appealing it, FEMA's pretty accurate.
Motion approved.
I don't, I don't really think, I mean, unless you wanted me to, wanted a appeal submitted, I just, it's just to review.
We just need to know, the council needs to know.
Just so that, that I can say, if I ever get questioned, that yes, you saw it.
Let me see.
Okay, and you already did not.
Didn't understand that we saw it.
As long as nobody wants to appeal, we can move on. Alright, uh, Seventy-Eight Rose Avenue Dangerous Building Order, um, update on the eight-five order to repair or demolish the dangerous buildings. Shelley's been working on this for quite a while.
Yeah, I, if you see, saw the notes that I had written, um, communicating with the property owner, um, there, there was communication that there had been, um, application to Johnson County for demoing part of the lean-to on, I guess, I don't know what to call them, it's kinda like.
It's a old chicken coop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's your grand. The lean-to part where the tree's growing up through, and there's photos in there, if you can see them. Um, and then that was, the garage was gonna be re-roofed, um, and when I spoke with Johnson County, they had no application. I did have a phone call again today because I called the property owner and let them know that this was gonna be on the agenda, uh, because we're coming up on the ninety-day, um, deadline for completion, and, uh, he let me know today that he was gonna go down tomorrow and actually fill out an application, even though I had been told that he did several times, um, so I just wanted to let the council know. I'm trying to work with the property owner, but.
When's the ninety-day, oh, say in the.
Um, it would be November fifth.
So he's, yeah, so he's got, but say he gets, uh, say within the ninety days, he gets the building permit and it doesn't get taken care of, or are we alright with that?
That's up to you guys.
You, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it might not be able to get a contract in there.
It's kinda like he's waiting till the last minute, uh, cause he's forced to go down there and do this.
Yeah, but I'm just saying now, it's like, I, what's getting tomorrow, October twenty-ninth or whatever, you're talking, there's no way if him getting a permit tomorrow and having this all done by November fifth is, is feasible.
Right.
We gave him ninety days.
Uh, but that's what I'm asking, are you guys okay with saying, so basically you're just telling him now that he's, it's not gonna happen, cause there's no way it's getting done with a weekend coming up here and by the fifth is next.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So wait, if you tear down a building, you have to get a building permit?
Well, yeah, our code says you do, yes, if you're demoing, you do.
Through the city?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but Johnson.
So nothing in the county?
But Johnson County handles all of our permitting, and they would be the people to inspect. I talked to Neil Bombay about this way back before this letter even got sent, how would this be handling?
So he couldn't just go and tear that building down himself?
Yes.
Oh, of course he can, yeah.
That's what I'm just like so confused about.
But you need to have a permit to demo.
So he, so he need to go out there tomorrow.
That's what I'm.
But he should have a permit filed through Johnson County.
Just like the, well, I mean, there's still the, what, what do we say, the roof has to be replaced, you don't need a permit to get that done?
Correct, it's the demo.
Hmm.
And, yeah, and, you know, was told on August twelfth that he was gonna get an estimate to repair the roof, and maybe he has, but just not had it completed yet.
So where do we, where do we proceed on the deadline?
What do you guys think, Cody, Adam, do you think there's any chance that that gets done by November fifth?
And, and I'm not disagreeing with that, I just think if we see a building permit actually come through to demo that lean-to, right? How many days after that do you feel is reasonable to have it demoed?
In other words, are we willing to give them an extension to get it done, is kinda what we're talking about?
Typically how I try to work with people, but when somebody continuously tells me one thing and doesn't follow through, that's when I, I become hesitant.
Yeah, what I don't like is how long he waited to actually.
We give a firm, firm deadline of thirty days.
Thirty days for demos?
Yep.
Is, is.
A firm issue.
Yeah, it's, it's a good, I mean, he, like you, like Cody said, I mean, he could go up there and demo it himself within thirty days if he had to. So.
This is the one part of city council that I despise more than anything, Robbie's been a lifelong friend of mine. I just say we have ordinances and policies to handle stuff like this that I don't wanna ruin friendships over, um, that's why we have city code.
Right.
What about the fire department, could they take the building down?
No.
No?
That's even more hoops to jump through.
Yeah, that's.
You don't wanna play that game.
Just like the roof.
So you're saying thirty days from the November fifth deadline?
You gotta do something, otherwise it's gonna go.
December fifth.
Right.
There'll be no end to it.
That's one of the violations, it's, there's more.
And you can see the photos, nothing's changed, other than the, the junk vehicle is, is gone.
So the roof has to be fixed too within?
Well, that, that's what the letter included, the roof on that garage.
The roof on the garage.
You can see the walls.
Caved detached, that one, this one.
Yeah, it's caved in on that side, isn't it, now? I think it's, I think, I think it's honestly, it's a minimum of a thirty-day extension i- if we have any chance of him getting it done, but, that's.
Well, let's work on thirty days and see what's happening, like, within those thirty days, right?
See if you see any progress.
That's how you work with people.
If there's progress, I, you know, I certainly would work with it.
Right.
Right.
There's gotta be a deadline somewhere, unfortunately.
Especially like the timing that we're giving it to him too, like thirty days when the snow's gonna be flying in twenty, you know? I mean, I granted, I know you guys are gonna say we've already given him ninety days, I don't know, but, but still, it's like, there's, that's a lot to get done in thirty days. At least you can see that he's got a contractor over there and doing it, or, or he's doing it himself or whatever, I think that's, I think you gotta be.
So since this is a change to the ordinance, would you need a motion to extend thirty days?
So much.
Same.
Further discussion?
Um, when you talked to him, when he said he was gonna go down and get, fill out for a permit?
That was just today, mm-hmm.
Uh, did he say he was gonna, or when did that come through here though, that we're gonna know that he's actually got?
So. Yeah, so typically when Johnson County gets out of the application, they forward it to me the same day.
Okay. And I would say.
Yeah, it'll show up fast, yeah, I'll know.
Okay. Cause that's gonna tell you whether or not he's being proactive. Okay.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I got, before we, okay, before you guys, uh, close the meeting, I, I just got one thing to ask Shelley.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
Um, since we don't have any city engineers here this, this meeting, I know you probably deal with them or Justin does or whatever, could someone please address that drive down there at John Service Six Place?
Have they done a jet?
It's still.
Drive at John Service?
It's still the, the two-inch minus or three-inch minus or whatever's on it, there's no way there's, we're gonna, that he's gonna be able to plow that this winter and everything. And he does have storage sheds back there that, they, they have not, they have not put, I, I think you need to put, it'd probably be like one-inch minus in there, which for, Adam, you would think, or something in there for, to make a, I mean, you can't have, you can't have the, them big rocks in there now, he can't even hardly drive over, let alone trying to plow that this winter, it's gonna be.
That's an issue for my Wednesday meeting, and we will address.
Okay, thank you, cause I.
Shelley doesn't need to do anything with it.
Okay, thank you, because I.
Like, and I will address.
I keep, I keep, there's one more on my list and I need to.
There's one more meeting on this pro, on the project. They're about done.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, and, and John's been, he's been, um, he knows that they got other stuff going and he, he just wants to make sure it does get done, because I mean, it's coming on snow flying and that lane is not usable. I mean, it's usable for a truck to drive on, but it's not, I mean, you, you take a gator on there, you take a mower on there, it's gonna.
And just.
Alright, that doesn't need to go to council though, that's for Wednesday, so are we going to adjourn since?
No.
Okay, just. No, I just, I, I wanted to bring up, make sure that everybody was aware that AccuJet's coming tomorrow, of course, just found out today. They're coming tomorrow to start the televising on one, two, three and four, so this did, Mallory put it out.
Perfect.
And I think that they are putting door knockers on every property.
How long does that take?
What?
To televise it, just.
Um, I think they said, I think the hard deadline is like the eighth of November, but they probably, yeah.
Doesn't hold the black type, but digging the manhole covers out?